I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting to order in which you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling, second by Mr. Quinn, all those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Citizens, participation, Dr. Henry?
We had no request for participation as per Board policy BDDH.
Written communications, Dr. Henry?
We did have one written communication, which is in your board docs.
Item 5A, military liaison, Mr. Bartel.
Hello, just a couple of quick announcements. This Friday, the 20th of July, big day for Fort Leonard Wood, we'll be hosting Old Dominion on Gerlock Field. The gates will open at 5:00 PM and the opening acts begin at 6:15. Opening acts are Walker County and Austin Moody. Tickets are available online at LeonardWoodArmy.MWR.com and at multiple MWR facilities. And I bring that up because, just so you know, the advanced ticket sales are cheaper than they are the day of the event, and this event is open to the public. And it's our opportunity to bring quality entertainment here to the Pulaski County, some soliciting support, I don't know if I can do that from my role here, but anyway, attendance would really be greatly appreciated from the community. On Friday, 27th of July, Wallace Swimming Pool will have a dive-in movie, starting at 8:30. And then also, the Boosters Club, the Waynesville High School Boosters Club, on 28th of July, will be having a golf tournament at Fort Leonard Wood, and it's open to the public. And it's a great way to support our student athletes and the boosters club, so we invite everybody out to participate. And that's the 28th of July, starting at 9 o'clock, that's a Saturday, at the Piney Valley Golf Course, so, thank you.
I'm sure Dr. Henry will be there with his clubs in hand.
Swimming pool, he likes. Golf, I don't know, he likes?
He plays once a year.
I play one time a year.
Whether you have to or don't?
That's right, I do.
You want us to put the big holes out?
No, really, but yes, yeah, yeah. Five gallon buckets would be helpful.
You got it. Anything for Dr. Henry.
Dr. F- there's the talk. 5B, district announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. We, yes, I do play one time a year, and you'll notice that Mike Keeling is standing up fully straight now. So it takes about a year after he carries me around the golf course to be able to, you know, stand up straight. So, and Dr. Berger's usually in that foursome, and then we usually bring another golfer to compliment, to compliment Mr. Keeling, and so we can place in the lower rung, right?
Flight Z.
Flight Z is what we're shooting for, usually, so. New student enrollment will be held July 24th and 25th. Parents should register their children at the school. Their children will attend, except for the middle school. Please note that this year only new middle school students will register at the high school due to construction. Seventh and eighth graders will attend the new middle school addition at the start of next school year. See Mrs. Sumter out there, she sent some good video today, and we're moving right along with the, with the middle school project. The first day of school will be Wednesday, August the 15th. This first Wednesday will be the only Wednesday that does not start late. All other Wednesdays will be started 30 minutes later, and buses will run 30 minutes later on Wednesdays. Open houses, also known as Meet the Teacher Nights, will be held August 9th, 13th, and 16th. For specific times, please check the Facebook page. Freshman Transition Day for all students entering the ninth grade, and New Student Transition Day for new students to the district who will be entering the 10th through 12th grades, will be held Tuesday, August the 7th, from 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM at Waynesville High School. Limited bus routes will be running that day as well. We will host Meet the Tigers at 7:00 PM Thursday, August the 16th, for all fall athletes at Tiger Stadium. Free physicals for Waynesville R6 athletes will be offered on July 12th, 30th, 31st, and August 1st and 2nd. Please see our athletics website for details. Football sponsorships are available for $500 per game. For more information, call 573-842-2040. As a reminder, most of our smaller schools on post will be closed during July, except for July 24th and 25th for new student registration. The post schools will be open on August 1st. Mark your calendars, we will host a diversity fair before the varsity football game, starting at 6:00 PM on Friday, September the 14th, at Tiger Stadium. And save the date for homecoming, which will be Friday, September 28th. So that's that message that all of the students that are watching, I know they're sitting around the TV watching the board tonight, but that, that we're coming back to school soon, message, I know Mary Henry was probably really looking too, so, that exciting message of coming back.
Yeah. And just on a side note, I know our swimming team is up and running.
Yes, it is, it is.
For the first time.
It is.
And we thank Fort Leonard Wood for all their help and assistance in-
It's all about the kids, it's all about taking care of kids.
Getting that program going.
Really excited, that's gonna be a great new addition for us, and we appreciate it.
You'll cut the ribbon at the first meet and jump in the pool? You never take the challenges.
Someone told me he was going to the 100 meter butterfly.
Oh, my goodness. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and delegate that to Dr. Berger, Mr. Bardell, he's a, he's a swimmer.
No, he's not a swimmer. I'm a waiter.
So who's the third in line?
Well, Mrs. Bales is out, so, yeah.
Okay. Consent items. 6A, bid recommendations?
Thank you, Dr. Fulmer. Routine, but rather pricey items on the, on the list today. I did want to point out one, it's the asbestos abatement in a May memo, a pretty thorough memo I sent out to the board. There was a little bit of debate as to whether we wanted to add that asbestos removal for Waynesville Middle School as possible, part of change order, change order for the Phase 1 of Waynesville Middle School. After it became apparent that we were gonna be probably a year before any work for, towards Phase 2 would occur, we've decided to kinda get out of the overhead and profit that we might turn over to our general contractor on that, and we bid that ourselves. The big number was quarter of a million dollars, and the bids came in really, really well. I think the timing, allowing more time for that work to be done was critical in that. And of course, also not having to pay anybody overhead and profit, but at 116, we're real pleased with that number. But I, I didn't want that to slide by you there, and want to bring that to your attention, because it's kind of the conclusion of that May board memo that went out.
Item, any questions? Item 6B, financials?
Thank you, Dr. Fulmer. July 10th, 2018, in the MOSIP account, $42,326,754.73. CDs, $10.5 million. In our general account, $4,393,973.75. Payroll account, $106,937.81. Total funds, $57,327,666.29.
Any questions? Hey, contracted MOUs? Dr. Henry?
Yes, they're here for your review. All of these contracts, per your approval, will be signed and sent out. We did have the one exception with the MOU that I contacted the board on regarding the US Army Garrison and our career embedded programs and internship programs there.
Okay. Any questions? We also have the regular June board meeting minutes for the study session, the regular session, and the closed session. I would ask for a motion to adopt those as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling, do I have a second? Second by Mr. O'Reilly, all those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Item 7A, Waynesville Middle School construction update?
Again, thank you, Dr. Fulmer. We're gonna get Mr. Hussman back-to-back Mondays here. Tonight's presentation will be kind of focused on Phase 1. A week from tonight, or a week from today, I guess, next week, we'll be looking more at Phase 2 potential, and that'll be the focus of that presentation, but Phase 1 tonight. Thanks, Don.
Good evening, everyone. Most of the slides that I'll show you this evening, I believe, date about two weeks ago, and things are changing rapidly on a daily basis if you happen to walk through. So let's take a look at some of the items that we have this evening. Exterior work is proceeding, this is along the east face, entry going into the physical ed wing, and I was just over there this evening, and they're making a lot of progress. Most of those concrete walls now are faced with brick and stone, and they've been washing, washing the stone and the brick. It looks very, very nice. They're working on a lot of the concrete pavement on that side of the building. Opposite side of the building, this is right outside of the cafeteria, that, that door, that single door is the, one of the doorways going into the cafeteria. That's actually a, a door for trash removal, it's not for, intended for students. But the, the ramp system is now all going in. There's quite a, quite a bit of site work on the western side of the building. All of the trailers, you probably noticed, all of the construction trailers and the staging of, of materials and such has been shifted to the opposite parking lot. Some of these are a little boring when you're just looking at piles of dirt and such, but there is a lot of activity going on there. Inside of the building, this is looking into the cafeteria, all of the equipment, I believe, is now in. Flooring, I believe, is now all in, so you can see that just two weeks ago, it was not. Whoop, let's go back one. Here we go. Yeah, that, that's a little bit newer of a photo. Lot of orange showing up in that building now. The corridors, this is the second floor corridor. The second floor, if you recall from our walkthrough several months ago, has always been a little bit ahead of the first floor activities. And as you walk the second floor now, punch list activities have been started several weeks ago now. The floors are, most of the floors, there's still a portion of the second floor that's not cleaned and waxed, but it's coming together. The library is still under construction, there's a lot of the casework, the circulation desk and such is, is still under construction as we speak today. That's the entry coming into the library. I believe at the time of this photo, those steps had just been set. Handrails still need to be installed here. Close up of the, of the terrazzo material. This material, there's not a lot of it in this phase, but in, in Phase 2, you'll see a lot of the same terrazzo in the entry piece. Very durable floor material, extremely low maintenance. Library, again, it's hard to see the, the wood-like ceiling, but it's very, very handsome. Now all of the carpet, well, I shouldn't say all, almost all of the carpet is in place in the library. It's really a handsome-looking space, too. Looks, looks a little bare here. Carpet really changes the character of it. This, we're looking, this is a little difficult to see, but I think that this space is really going to be exceptionally nice. This is the large reading room, and we're looking back into the technology area. It's kind of hard to tell from the, I don't know if this will show. These, these indent, indented areas in, on this side of, this is a projecting column, and on this side, those are glass walls that, they're magnetic, so you can actually put up, you know, anything with magnets on those, or you can write directly onto those, so it's a very interactive space. It will be a really, really nice technology area. Science is moving right along. This, this looks like science, the floors are waxed, you can tell by the sheen, and they're ready to go. Whoop, one more, same thing. Any questions? Okay.
We will have some Monday, 'cause we're getting down the stretch, so.
I'm sure.
They'll be ramped up.
We are, okay, thank you.
I was looking at that, Don, and made the same, those are 73, about everything you showed there is a visible difference. Carpet in Waynesville Middle School, the, the brick fa- on the, on the ramp face there, or ramp face, so, exciting to come down the stretch.
Any questions? Okay. Item 7B, summer school report. Dr. Atkins?
You guys get the, the poor man's version of Dr. Atkins, and we are certainly thinking about her now with, with her family's loss. But the, the summer school report, actually, things in summer school went very well this year. We had a total of 324 high school students complete the first session, 278 complete the second session. High school students chose from a variety of courses, including core credit classes, credit recovery, PE, and other electives. We saw an increase in, in our K5 students and in grades K8, we had 1,595 students complete summer school. Piney Ridge served also 72 students this summer school. And one thing that's not in here is I know that Mr. Whalen put together a, a summer school program for our pick students as well this summer, which was great, you know, to keep them in, keep earning credits. So overall, very successful summer school. And in addition, if you look at the, the report, that last column over there, you'll note that we, we had our highest percentage in the last four years of students who started summer school, complete summer school. So, very successful summer school.
Very good. Questions? Item 7C, report on services provided to students entering in transition living situations.
Right. Thank you, Mr. President. The district provides services to students who experience transitional living situation during the course of the year. The purpose of services is to ensure that students who are classified as homeless under the McKinney-Vento Act are able to access educational programs without barriers. During the 2017-18 school year, we, we had about 145 students who experienced some form of transitional living. As it stated in the report, that can be several different criteria for, to be considered transitional living. We're down slightly from last year, but, but certainly, there is an impact on, on students' ability to learn in the classroom when they, they don't have a routine shelter over their head. So we do have Title I funds, $825, that went out to buy general supplies for these students this year. Great to see a decrease, but something that, that we monitor very closely to make sure we're addressing their, their needs.
Very good. Questions? Item 7D, 2017-18 discipline report, Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following information is a review of the discipline throughout the district and at individual buildings for the 2017-18 school year. Our first slide represents yearly cumulative discipline within the district for the, for the past five years. As you can see, the district experienced an increase of 446 incidents, or 9.4% from the 2016-2017 school year to the most current 2017-18 school year. Our next slide represents yearly cumulative discipline at each building for the past five years. As you can see, four schools demonstrated a decrease in referrals. These schools include East, Thayer, Wood, and Waynesville Middle School. And then four schools demonstrated an increase in referrals, which included Freedom, Partridge, Waynesville 6th Grade Center, and Waynesville High School. As you can see directly above the graph, it also shows the percentage of increase or decrease at each school related to the number of referrals written as compared to the previous school year. Next, we have our three-year trend data related to the number of infractions at Waynesville High School within each incident subcategory. The total number of incidents at Waynesville High School increased by 95, or 5.7%, from the previous school year. Notable subcategories experiencing a reduction at Waynesville High School this past year included academic dishonesty, bullying, disrespect to staff, fighting, and foul language and profanity. WHS experienced reductions for the second consecutive year in the subcategories of electronic devices, failure to attend detention, insubordination, shoving and pushing, and tardies. Notable areas of increase included classroom discipline problems, public display of affection, and skipping. The three areas with the highest infractions at Waynesville High School this past school year included tardies with 415 incidents, classroom discipline problems with 307 incidents, and skipping with 278 incidents. It's important to note that the number of tardies have declined the past two years, while classroom discipline and skipping have both increased. This next slide represents the number of and percentage of incidents that occurred at Waynesville High School based on race. Our African-American population experienced a decline in incidents for the second consecutive year, reducing referrals by 163, or 28.2%, while all other areas demonstrated an increase. Our white population continues to hold the highest percentage of incidents at 47%, followed by our African-American population at 24.9%, our Hispanic population at 10.9%, and our multiracial population at 10.3%. Our next slide represents the total number of suspensions, both in-school and out-of-school, at Waynesville High School and the Waynesville Career Center combined. In-school suspension days increased by 404 days, or 55%, with 201 in-school suspension infractions taking place throughout the school year. Out-of-school suspension days increased by 221 days, or 17.8%, with 153 out-of-school suspension infractions taking place throughout the school year. The next slide represents a three-year trend in the number of infractions at Waynesville Middle School in each incident subcategory. The total number of incidents at Waynesville Middle School decreased by 139, or 8.2%, from the previous school year. The middle school also demonstrated the decline in its number of incidents for the second consecutive year. Notable subcategories experiencing a reduction at Waynesville Middle School this past year included electronic devices, shoving and pushing, and tardies. Waynesville Middle School experienced reductions for the second consecutive year in subcategories related to academic dishonesty, classroom discipline, disrespect to staff, fighting, and insubordination. Notable areas of increase included foul language and profanity, and technology misconduct. The three areas with the highest infractions included tardies with 554 incidents, classroom discipline with 147 incidents, and electronic devices with 278 incidents. Although, although these do represent the areas with the highest infraction, it's important to note that all of these areas have declined in number since the 2016-2017 school year. Our next slide represents the number of and the percentage of incidents that occurred at Waynesville Middle School based on race. There was a decrease in the number of incidents for American Indian, Alaskan native, Hispanic, and white students, while all other areas experienced an increase. At WMDS, our white population continues to hold the highest percentage of incidents at 44.5%, followed by our African-American population at 33.3%, and our multiracial The next slide represents the total number of suspensions, both in-school and out-of-school, at Waynesville Middle School. There were 85 fewer out-of-school suspension days at Waynesville Middle School this school year compared to the last, and out-of-school suspension days decreased for the second consecutive year. The number of out-of-school suspension infractions also decreased by 40, or 35.4%. There were 163 more in-school suspension days issued in comparison to the previous year, and there was also an increase in the number of ISS infractions. Our next slide reviews suspensions at the 6th Grade Center and elementary sites. There were 939 combined disciplinary infractions at the Waynesville 6th Grade Center and the elementary schools during the 2017-18 school year. This demonstrated a decrease of 109 infractions, or 10.4%, compared to the previous school year, and was, and was a second consecutive year these schools demonstrated a combined decrease within infractions. Collectively, the 6th Grade Center and our elementary schools saw an increase of 31 ISS infractions, a decrease of 50 OSS infractions from the 2017-16-17 school year to the most current school year. Schools demonstrating a decrease in ISS infractions included Freedom, Partridge, and Wood, and Thayer remained constant at zero. Schools demonstrating a decrease in OSS infractions included East, Thayer, and Wood. The next slide represents the three-year trend on the number of and the percentage of incidents that occurred at the 6th Grade Center based on race. There was a decrease in the number of incidents for African-American, Asian, and Hispanic students, while all other areas experienced an increase. At Waynesville 6th Grade Center, our white population continues to hold the highest percentage of incidents at 50.9%, followed by our African-American population at 23.9%, and our multiracial The next slide represents the three-year trend on the number of and percentage of incidents that occurred at our elementary schools based on race. Going through each of the schools, East experienced a decrease in all areas, with the exception of their Asian population, which remained constant at one infraction. Freedom experienced a decrease in the number of incidents for their African-American and Asian populations. Their Hawaiian, Pacific Islander population remained constant at one incident, and all other areas increased. Partridge demonstrated a decrease in the number of incidents for their Hispanic, multiracial, and white populations, while their African-American infractions increased, and all other, other areas remained constant at zero infractions. Thayer demonstrated a decrease in the number of incidents for their Hispanic, multiracial, and white populations, while all other areas remained constant. And last but not least, Wood experienced a decrease in the number of incidents for their African-American, Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, Hispanic, multiracial, and white populations, while all other areas, areas remained constant at zero. And finally, our last slide represents the three-year trend on the percentage of incidents that occurred at each elementary school based on race. At East, Freedom, and Thayer, our white population continues to hold the highest percentage of incidents, while our African-American population holds the highest number of incidents at Wood and Partridge. Collectively, at our elementary schools, our white population yields the highest percentage of incidents at 57.4%, followed by our African-American population at 21.3%, our multiracial population at 11.2%, our Hispanic population at 8.2%, our American Indian, Alaskan native population at 1.3%, our Hawaiian, Pacific Islander population at .5%, and our Asian population at .1%. And that concludes the discipline report for the 2017-2018 school year. Any questions?
Any questions? Hey, very good, thank you, Todd. Item 8A, action items, board policy, BBFA, Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the district's conflict of entrance, interest ordinance expires this year and must be readopted by September. There are no comments or concerns were expressed with, with the policy after first reading, so I have this to recommend for your approval.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling, do I have a second? Senate, second, second by Janet. All those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Item 8B, policy JCB, Dr. Hen- or Mrs. Bales?
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration recommends approval of the changes to policy JCB as presented, please.
Any questions? Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. O'Reilly, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Quinn. All those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Item 8C, Project Edge Tech Handbook, second reading, Mr. Henson?
I'll go ahead and field this one for him. You all know that I'm one of the most tech-savvy people in the district, so if you have detailed questions, I may have to call on Mr. Henson. But we have had this out for first reading. Board has certainly been briefed and provided valuable input in the creation of a handbook for our Pilot One-to-One Initiative, so it's now coming to the board for final approval. And if you have any questions regarding that, I will refer those to Mr. Henson.
Okay. Questions? Come on, somebody come up with some questions for us. All right, if, all right, no questions, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling, second by Mr. O'Reilly, all those in favor by a show of hands. All those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved. Item 8D, proposed job description revision. Ms. Bales?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job descriptions are presented for second reading. 4.8.1A, Executive Secretary Personnel/Supervisor. 4.8.9, Administrative Secretary/Operational Services. 4.9.2, Student Service Specialist. 4.12.6, Information Systems Specialist. 4.12.8, Curriculum and Instructional Technology Specialist. And Administration requests approval of the, of named job descriptions at this time, please.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Quinn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Keeling. All those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved. Item 8E, textbook recommendations. Dr. Henry?
It's me again. I know. The, at the time of our, our regular math course adoptions in May, we, we still had some review going on in calculus and pre-calculus with, to align with the AP curriculum. So at this time, we do have a, a pre-calculus series to recommend, McGraw-Hill Pre-Calculus, and the Calculus course, which is Rogowski's Calculus Early Transcendental's for AP. And we would recommend those for approval.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. O'Reilly. All those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved. There is no, there is, we've already dealt with closed-session business, so with that, I would take a motion to adjourn for the evening.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling. Do I have a second? I can't get a second. Mr. Dearing? All those in May, all those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved.